Can we call for order, can we begin with roll call?
Councilmember Babcock. Councilmember Brookover.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg. Mayor Bacon.
Present. Clarification, you guys are okay being recorded for people who aren't present.
Oh, that's fine.
We'll start with, I'll kind of combine these together if they come across to you when we get to that part. A little bit of, a little bit on your background, and then who would be the lead city attorney, and who, what would be your response time and availability and kind of how the team got work.
Yeah, I'm Charlie Lawler. I live here in Okemos. I'm the man, the member in charge of our Lansing office, which presently is on East Caesar Chavez Boulevard. It's going to be moved downtown on Washington Avenue shortly because we have a lobby presence and the lobbyists want to be downtown. The majority of the people who would be serving the city will be stationed here in Lansing and have ties here, too. Just, some of you don't know me, but I'm a late to life attorney. I owned and operated retail businesses in East Lansing for 20 years. And back when we, I owned the country market at the corner of Grand River and Hagadore. It may have predated some of you, but George surely knows where I was. I was also on the Alcohol.
Always has to take a hit at it. It always happens.
Sorry, George. That's just, you know. The, I was on the Alcohol Action Committee that Michigan State set up with the city. I was the only package liquor dealer on that for two years back when we were having all the disruptions, which it seems like we still have occasionally. So, we're happy to serve. I've got a 517 area, go into my telephone number, so we'll be here. Nancy?
I would be serving as the city attorney if Clark Hill is selected. In terms of response and availability, typically my response time is dependent upon your need. I, that's part of the questions that I ask every time. You tell me what you need, and I always ask, when do you need it by? I typically exceed the expectations relative to when you need, and if there was ever a reason for a delay, I would certainly talk with you about that in advance. In terms of calls and emails, I am responsive to both, usually that same day. I don't want to say always, but pretty much always. It may not be to give you the answer you're looking for, but to let you know where I'm at in my schedule, so that you have a definite idea of when we're going to connect, if it's later that day, or the next day, or whatever.
Hi, I'm Ingrid Jensen, and I am practicing attorney in the Grand Rapids office. I work a lot with Nancy and with her municipal clients. I'm primarily a real estate attorney, so I get involved when there are real estate issues. I also do a lot of tax tribunal work for different units in the west Michigan area. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have about either that kind of work, tax tribunal work, or real estate work, or anything that might, you might just want to ask something of a different side that not, doesn't do just all municipal work.
And by the way, I'm Nancy Mullet. I didn't introduce myself at the outset. I know I've talked with you all, but that's who I am, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
Next question. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are not just words in this city. What racial justice work has your firm been involved in? And how does diversity show in your firm? And how does inclusion matter?
Go ahead.
Do you want me to start?
Sure, Charlie.
I guess the, number one, without a doubt, Clark Hill is locked in, and I don't know if anybody here knows about the Mansfield Rule. I brought some brochures about it. Can I approach? Clark Hill is in the process of the two-year certification to live and practice by the Mansfield Rule. And it's a diversity initiative. It's already taken place at the firm. We have a group for the women lawyers at the firm, a committee. We have a, which Ingrid can talk about more than me, probably. We have a bold initiative for them. We have a pride group. We recognize Pride Month. We have gay and minorities and women on our executive committee, and we're committed to it in the hiring process and the promotion process. And when you get a chance to look at that, you'll see that the standards are pretty stringent, and we're working on it.
Now, to add to that, I have a few personal aspects to add to that. First, I served on the local YWCA board for about 12 years, a few years ago, and six of those years I was president of the board. Part of the mission statement of the YWCA is to eliminate racism. And so, from a personal point of view, and dealing with the community and my law firm, we worked on that aspect of the mission strenuously. We had a day called Stand Against Racism, and I involved the Grand Rapids office in that, in that particular event every year. The second point I wanted to make is I personally feel very welcomed at the firm. I am a gay woman. I'm married, and I have three lovely daughters. And just recently, I stepped down from my position as member in charge of the Grand Rapids office, but I was the member in charge, which is a significant leader position, as Charlie knows. I served in that position for 15 years. So, you know, our firm is very open for any kind of, that kind of inclusion.
I'm set up, I'm ready to go. I got through that intersection at Harrison, and life is good. As city attorney, you must have a good understanding of the city charter and city ordinances. Part A, do you believe that it is important to enforce the city charter and ordinances, even when enforcement may be contrary to an outcome desired by the city council or city staff? And part B, using the city charter as your guide, what is the nature of the relationship between the city council and the city attorney? And the nature of the relationship between the city council and the city manager?
I'll answer that question. In terms of part A, I think it's, it's a priority to enforce the ordinance in the charter, as well as any other law or legally binding authority that you have in the city, even if the enforcement of that ordinance is contrary to what you, as a council, hope to achieve. That said, though, just because you, you receive advice that says, we need to enforce this particular ordinance, that to me just means you can't meet your goals via that path. So, the second step to that question is, tell me a little bit about what your goal is. What are you trying to achieve? And what are the other ways that we can talk about and brainstorm and figure out how to meet that goal? Because it's not always one specific path to get to that goal. It's that's one specific path that you have thought of, and when we put our heads together, there may be multiple paths for, or at least one, that will help you reach your goals. And so, that's, that's part of my role as, as an advisor, not just as an attorney. In terms of the relationship between the city attorney and the city council, I report to the city council here or anywhere, and I serve at the pleasure of the city council. That's just, that's just a fact. It's not my role to be political, to take a position, or to even have you know what my political persuasion is. If I'm doing my job, then, then you won't, because my role should be neutral, and it's to provide the best advice and the best legal advice that I can. That said, typically in a municipality, the relationship is day-to-day with the city manager, who may very well, and by charter, is allowed to actually assign the work to the city attorney in conjunction with the city council. So, that's, that's what I see the relationship as. My role is to provide the best legal advice to you that I can, and to do it in a responsive, timely manner. The city manager, under your charter and under most charters, is, is the, the operational wheel of your cities. The chief administrative officer under your charter, and there is a list of obligations and duties for that manager to accomplish at the request and in connection with the city council. So, there's a little closer tie in your charter with the city manager. Oftentimes, the council hires the manager, and the manager does everything else. So, you have a little bit more of an interaction and a tie than some charters, but it is still the responsibility of the city manager to administer the city, to make sure the budget is, is presented to you in a balanced way, to provide program updates, initiatives, introduce ordinances. And so, it's, it's kind of a triangle. If there's a new ordinance, I suspect the city attorney would be the one drafting it, and then the city manager would be reviewing it, asking questions, maybe suggesting others. It would then be presented to the council, and you just continue on that triangular path.
I'm going to ask, actually, combine a few questions here.
Sure.
So, there's three parts to this question.
Okay.
First part is, please state how many criminal and/or civil jury trials each member of your proposed team has tried to avert. Second question is, please state which members of your proposed team have presented oral argument before the Michigan Court of Appeals, and on how many occasions. And the third question is, same question asked to the Michigan Supreme Court.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start with that. I can't give you a number of criminal and civil trials. We can certainly try to compile a list, and one of the challenging aspects of that, as I was a prosecutor for a number of years, so the number of criminal trials, both at the district court and at the circuit level, is, is very, very high. And I, I simply can't provide, it's a lot. And that's not a number, but it's a lot. And that is too, too verdict, either via bench trial or a jury trial. In terms of civil, I am not a litigator. I have done a couple of civil trials, two verdict, over the last couple of years, one in this past year. And we have a litigation department that would handle that. And, but we're busy. We, we do regularly. I'm currently involved in litigation with one of my public clients, so that would make two in the past year, which is high for me, because typically municipalities would involve their insurance carrier to assist with the actual litigation. And I'll let Charlie speak to that as well. In terms of the Court of Appeals, I started my career out working for the Court of Appeals, both during law school, and then was invited to work there after law school, and then asked back a second year after that, they tell you to please spread your wings and go somewhere else, and I did. As a prosecutor, I have been in front of the Court of Appeals a number of times, and I did have the benefit of one oral argument with the Supreme Court, myself. Charlie?
As far, I've never prosecuted a criminal trial to verdict. I've been over here a number of times in district court, representing many of my partners' kids who get in trouble in Michigan State, and those are generally pled out pretty quickly. I have litigated in a number of civil trials to jury, both in state court and in the bankruptcy court of the western district of Michigan. I've been in front of the Court of Appeals a number of times, have published opinions, been in front of the Michigan Supreme Court a number of times, maybe six or eight, and have a published opinion there, too. If you look, I, I don't think that's listed in the files of the other people that are listed in here, but if you look at Ron King, you look at Mike Patwell, you look, I don't think Linda Watson's on our list here, but we would probably use her if we needed to, and Zach Larson, you've got some of the best litigators in the state of Michigan, and I would put them up against anybody. And we've litigated, I presently have three, three cases in the sixth circuit court of appeals. So, we've got the litigator to handle whatever case you need to handle, and we would assign it to the appropriate level of litigator to handle the matter and supervise it.
Just to add to that, I've had, in the last 10 years, four trials at the Michigan Tax Tribunal. And for those of you who don't know what the Tax Tribunal is, you probably all do, but the Tax Tribunal is the, the court that handles challenges to tax assessments, taxable value, and principal residence exemptions, and things of that nature.
Thank you. We can provide a detailed list of that if you, if you want one.
It's going up to you guys. If you want, if you want to include as an email or something that's not.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to actually, I'm going to miss a little bit and move ahead to questions around, since you're in the gear up already on the tribunal question. So, I've got to do 12 of them. What's your experience handling property tax appeals on behalf of a municipality? Have you handled major trials in front of the tribunal?
So, a primary part of my practice, I'd say probably 30% of my practice, is the, in the Tax Tribunal. And I have handled significant cases. Most recently, I was in the tribunal two years ago for a 10-day trial with some other attorneys from my office on wind turbine appeals, determining the valuation of wind turbines, mostly in the middle of the state, and in the thumb area, which, if you don't know, the thumb area has the most significant wind in the state, far exceeds any other area of the state, including over by Lake Michigan, which is, most people don't realize. So, I had a 10-day trial with the tribunal in, about two years ago with that. So, my process, and I, and I represent four or five cities and three or four townships on the west side of the state. But my process with tribunal cases is, I work very closely with the assessor, and once an appeal is filed, we, I provide the answer to that, and then I work with the assessor and the opposing, either attorney or tax representative, to resolve the case, and to get to a fair value, because that's what it's really about. What is, what is the true cash value of this property? I don't like to, you know, take, stand, you know, positions in the sand and not have any discussion. I like to settle the cases, I like to resolve the cases where it's comfortable for both parties. And that's been my philosophy with tax tribunal cases from day one.
If you have further questions.
Number eight.
Number eight. This is a, what do you guys call it?
Store.
It's a store. A developer has approached the council regarding a four-acre city-owned property in the northern tier, and they would like to redevelop into a senior care facility. The property recently became the city's, as a part of a gift to the city, and is not currently listed for sale. The former use of the property indicates that they may be, there may be some environmental contamination on the site. The developer has stated that they would need to utilize brownfield tax increment financing to address any site contamination that may exist. What factors would you recommend the council consider in response to this?
So, I'm going to go ahead and, and answer this question. The person who specializes in brownfield redevelopment is sick. He was supposed to be here with us tonight, but he wasn't able to make it. And so, I've gone ahead and done a couple of things. I have a detailed answer from him, and if you want some specifics, feel free to ask me. But based on my experience representing tax increment financing authorities, brownfield redevelopment authorities, and downtown development authorities, I thought maybe what you're asking is really a high view. So, the first thing that I would be looking at and be providing information to you is making a determination of whether this property even is an eligible property under the Brownfield Redevelopment Act. So, is it, is it an eligible property? Is there a need for financial assistance? And if those two are yes, assuming this is a private development, is there a substantial public benefit from moving forward with this project for the senior care facility? That's the first thing. So, meeting all, and that's not all of the minimum requirements, but making sure that all the minimum requirements happen, Matt. The second thing I would be looking at is, I noticed in your story problem that this was a gift. The property was a gift. So, I'd want to know a little bit more about that, whether there are any restrictions or prohibitions within the gift language that would prohibit the city from selling the property. Maybe yes, maybe no, but that's something that we just want to dot that I and cross that T. Because it was a gift, and because you obviously would be concerned about any future liability, I would want to take a look at when was the date of the gift. So, pre-95, not as many concerns on due care obligations that might arise down the road, but post-95, maybe some other things that we would want to take a look at relative to future liability. And then, because you might be looking at some due care obligations or some liability down the road, taking a look at what is the, what is the extent of the contamination, and maybe considering providing the assessment and the cleanup yourselves, and then having the ability to sell the property free and clear. I'm not saying that that is the best option, but it's certainly something that I would want to, kind of in a holistic view, take a look at all of the different options that are available to you, if you are looking for some guidance on it. And then, because I'm not familiar with the land use, the proposed future land use for the northern tier, I did look that up. And, and I'm not sure that a senior care facility, based on what I have, I couldn't say that it meets the proposed future land use. I'm not sure whether this will be a five, or 10, or 15, or 24-unit facility. I don't know if it's independent living, if it's assisted living, if it's a step-down unit. And so, having some information whether that would even meet the requirements for the northern tier. The other thing is, is just taking a look at what you have in there, that if you decide to sell it, what's the voter approval? Is it, is, do you need voter approval? Probably. But taking a look at all of those things. And if you want more detail, I can provide you the information that Ron did provide me.
Thank you. I finally get to read this question. It's significant to me for the reasons my council members, fellow council members have got. The council of neighborhood leaders are quite upset regarding a neighborhood of the White Hills neighborhood that is my camp. I live in High Falls. The grass is several feet high. There are strange smells wafting from piles of material clearly visible on the property, and there are unpermitted structures on the premises. Previous attempts over the years to bring enforcement action have resulted in protracted legal disputes that resulted in an unfavorable outcome for the city, yet issues persist. What advice would you give to the council?
So, I'm going to go ahead and answer that, and I think this is similar to a question that was asked the first time around, with, with some pretty similar themes throughout it. And, and I can just dissect the question so you can understand what I considered when trying to determine what I would advise all of you to do. The first thing I noticed was that this has been a problem for several, several years. And, and you have a history of enforcement that has failed, and you have a history of some sort of legal activity, and that has not been favorable for the city. So, when you have a problem that is chronic in nature, such as this, the first thing that I would want to know is what, in effect, what has been done that shouldn't have been done, and what hasn't been done that you might want to consider doing to achieve a different outcome. To just do the same thing, say, enforce the code, that hasn't worked. So, that necessary, that might be the right legal advice, but it's not the right advice to solve your problem. And so, this is kind of tied into, do we need to enforce the ordinance? Sure. Is that going to achieve your goal of cleaning up this property? Well, it hasn't. So, what else can we take a look at? You have adopted the International Property Code. That is a really expansive document, and it provides you with a tremendous amount of discretion, and it provides you with the ability to, to grant modifications, to make some, some value judgments about how this is going to be enforced going forward. And that's important to know, because that tells me you have the ability to fashion a remedy that may achieve the outcome that you want, without strict liability to, you are violating the code, here's a fine, you can't pay the fine, so what are we going to, we're going to give you another fine, and another fine, because your property code is a day-by-day-by-day kind of mechanism for fining. So, what I would really want to do is get to the heart of the matter. Who is this occupant? Is it the owner, or is it a tenant? Does that occupant have the capacity to adhere to the requirements that you are putting in front of them? And when I say, do they have the capacity, I mean that. Are they, are they able to understand what they need to do? Are they able to afford to do what it is that they need to do? Is there any possibility of mental illness? Is there any possibility that this is a special needs? And so, looking at it from that perspective, if they don't have the capacity to comply, then simply enforcing the ordinance and providing a fine is going to continue with the same outcome. And so, if they don't have the capacity, or if there's a need for, to get creative, I would be looking at what supports are in the community. Is there a community group? Is there a mental health, a mental health group that could provide some assistance? Are there any advocates in the community? Is there a church? Is there any group that we could bring in that would help kind of bridge between the upset of the city for the lack of enforcement, and the upset of the occupant who says, I'm not going to, or I can't, or I need another, I need another alternative? And that's how I would approach it, and I would keep at that until we are out of any way to, to solve that problem from an alternative perspective. Ultimately, you have a property maintenance code. It covers not only dangerous buildings, but unsafe and unsanitary kinds of conditions. And if it gets to the point where, where it is unsafe, or it is unsanitary, and you have exhausted all of your abilities, you may need to act to intervene and have the occupant removed for his safety or her safety, as well as for the liability of the city. Ultimately, you have to, you have to pay attention to your liability, but you want to do it in the most compassionate way that you can, if that's possible. That was probably too long of an answer, but.
In 2005, a building alteration was approved by the Building Zoning and Historic Preservation Division. And work was completed to renovate a two-unit duplex near downtown. The work completed in 2005 included modifications, including removal of the separation of units, kitchen, living areas, and adding bedrooms. These changes effectively made it a one-unit rental property. During a routine inspection, the housing inspector noticed that the rental license currently on file with the city, excuse me, is still a Class III rental license for two units, with each unit being licensed for up to two. He alerted the housing administrator, who has brought the issue to your attention. There are currently five renters living in the building. What actions, if any, do you recommend?
I guess the response here is similar to Nancy's prior response in some respects. You know, a lot of times, like, I could have said for Nancy's response, you know, how's that working out for you? But we're generally people that have conversations and try to get to resolutions and avoid the litigation. You guys have a plethora full of laws, regulations regarding rentals. I mean, you know, we'd have to ask questions like, how did this happen? How did we get there? What was the breakdown? What happened? You know, who's the developer, or who's the owner? Many times, a chat across the table or a chat on a telephone call will rectify these situations to something that works out better than, than litigation. Even though I'm a litigator, I'm not a rush to litigate, because when we get through litigation, nobody's happy in the end except the lawyers. So, we get paid, and we make money, but what do we get out of it? You know, we, we want the city council to be. You know, we, we want the city council to be satisfied, you know, we want your residents to be satisfied. We want them to be treated with, with respect until they put us in a position where they don't deserve that respect. I mean, we've got oodles of associates that we can litigate matters and make it tough for anybody, but that really isn't where we want to be. We, we're problem solvers. So the first thing we do is pick up the phone and call. And we get the information from George or from the appropriate department, the housing inspector. Let's find out what happened and how we got there. Number one, we don't want it to happen again. And then we get to a resolution. Do you have anything to add to that?
I'm fine. That's good.
By the city charter, all contracts must be approved by the city attorney. This is a frequent requirement. Please tell who will be involved in review and how we do.
So the way I typically handle it with, with other municipalities where I'm providing general council services, whether it's as a city or a village or a county attorney, is that typically until a relationship is established with somebody else with a specialty, the contract would go through me. I would take a look at it, determine who has the best skill for that, and pass that to them with whatever timelines or information that's needed that would go with that. It is based on a timeline. So, so if you said you needed it immediately, and let's say it is a property or a real estate matter, it, it's not infrequently that I call Ingrid, and especially the last several months where I have said, we really do need to have this reviewed in the next 24 to 48 hours. And, and we're able to accommodate that. It's not necessarily because it's, it fits nicely into a workday, but our job is to meet your requirements, and, and that's how we handle it. Is it cost-effective? It certainly is. When I review a, a contract to turn over to somebody with expertise, I'm reviewing it and not necessarily charging for that because Ingrid or Charlie is actually going to be reviewing the substance of that contract.
That's internal section. Are you satisfied with the section on the line?
So we're going to move over again to the prosecution, court prosecution questions. So the first question is, describe your experience with district court practice. Please include trial court experience and number of cases taken to trial. Also describe any experience with prosecuting cases in other jurisdictions.
So I'll, I'll kick that off. You've heard from Charlie a little bit about the fact that he has represented in district court. My experience in, in district court primarily has been as a prosecutor, and that was in Calhoun County, and I was there for a number of years. Like any new prosecutor, and I was a new prosecutor when I went to Calhoun County, I started out and was assigned to district court. So the district court practice is similar across the state. You have, you have to go through the arraignment process. If you're part of arraignment, you go through the pre-trial process where you can identify any issues, establish who is who within the case, talk about any agreements that might be reached that would resolve the case in lieu of a trial, and then go through the process of getting it on the trial docket if there isn't. Often there are a couple of contacts between the pre-trial and the trial because, you know, typically you have, and you know, the, the pre-trial day, you're going to have 50 or 60 or 100 cases. And the trial docket is going to be a number of cases called into trial for that exact same day. They're not all going to go, but the hope is you go through one, then go on to two, three, and four. And so that's a practice that, that is, is just ingrained in my brain because I did it so many times. It's important because district court to me is really just, it's a high-volume court. And you have to work against it becoming just an assembly line kind of job. You have to take a beat to really read the case, to understand what information you might need to resolve that, and, and to remember that this is a significant event for the person on the other side of it. Number of cases? A lot.
What would be the structure of the second for the team?
Yeah. So it would, it would likely not be me doing the prosecution. We would be engaging another attorney for the sole purpose of handling the prosecution of the cases, and we have actually talked with a couple as of today. In lieu of that, certainly, there is no problem with me filling the gap. And I, and I know, I just would say this, last week when you all were reviewing the questions, I heard some concerns raised about a, somebody at a partner level isn't going to come in and do that, and it's exhausting work. I can tell you, a partner may very well step in and do that. And from my perspective, I don't find the criminal side of, of law as exhausting, regardless of whether it's 50 or 60 or 100 or this crazy docket. It's not exhausting to me, it's incredibly rewarding.
I think the other thing we should mention too, Nancy, is, you know, I've got quite a bit of experience in sobriety court.
Yep.
Mainly as an advocate for alcoholics, because it's a personal thing for me. My son's an alcoholic, and to be honest with you, Judge Allen probably saved his life over in the 55th District Court. Judge Larkin was kind enough to assign him over there prior to you guys having a sobriety court. Judge Allen has asked me to be on, I'm on the FAN board, which is Families Against Narcotics, at a special request of him. I present to him on a regular basis. I would have a personal interest in being involved in sobriety court and some of the mental health court and the veterans courts because you can save people's lives. You don't win them all, but I, I think we as attorneys, and I, I know all three of us sitting here would attest to the fact that we've been pretty blessed in our life. And I think us people that are blessed have a duty, and we have to reach out to other people and help other people. And now, you know, that's what we're put here for. We're, we're here to serve, so.
Following that nicely. What is your experience with alternatives to jail? For instance, special status designations, deferred sentencing, or treatment, treatment courts? Please provide examples of cases you or your firm have handled that fell under each category.
Okay. So Charlie has talked to you very specifically about some of his representation, and, and they have resulted in both deferred as well as treatment court. I'm right now on a pro bono basis. I represent the defense attorney on the mental health treatment court team in Calhoun County. And so I, every other week for about four hours, I participate in, in the review of all of the mental health court participants, and then go into court to advocate for whatever it is that needs to happen. In the event there's a sanction that's going to be imposed or a probation violation, I would meet with that individual and simply go over what their rights are, help them understand the process that they're going through, find out whether they want to have an actual probation violation hearing, make sure that they understand that if they do, an attorney will be assigned for them if they want one, and they should want one. And then we would go back into court and the, the judge would be able to understand that. I've been a part of mental health treatment court since it was just a thought and have been part of the creation. In terms of other treatment courts, Charlie talked about sobriety court, drug court. We work hand-in-hand with the drug court, the mental health treatment court, and I was also involved in, in the creation of, in, in Calhoun County because that's where I was a prosecutor, with the, with the development of the domestic violence policy that's still in existence there, and now a domestic violence treatment court.
Another thing, Nancy, is that Matt Smith from our office is a former Marine Corps prosecutor, and he has a special affinity with veterans. And he, he affirmed to me today that he would be willing to help with the veterans court too if we needed assistance there.
In terms of deferred sentences or alternatives to jail, most of, most of the processes, whether you're looking at alternatives like Home Shield Training Act, or just some sort of deferred sentence, a community service obligation, those kinds of things, those alternatives have, have always been around. They have always been around. It's just more recently with, with the changes in some of the reform legislation that the way in which they're implemented and the burden for who should get it and when has kind of switched over. So it's made it a little more accessible to, to defendants, and hopefully as time and training goes on, they'll be taken advantage of in a, in a, in a better way.
I'm going to combine two questions because I think they're actually halfway the same. So please explain what factors you would consider when offering a plea agreement. And intrinsic in that is how would you balance the need to deter future violations and someone's inability to pay fines to cost? And then as another portion of that, considering jail reform legislation, what support mechanisms would you consider in a plea agreement to allow for successful completion of a court's judgment? And I, I guess I'd ask you, since you've already talked about veterans court, mental health court, I guess I'd ask you to talk about the non-specialty court kind of cases.
Okay. So, so beyond that, I think, again, and it's, it's good that you combined them because when I was taking my notes, which are kind of all over, I have a combined answer for both of those. I don't think there's.
Thank you, because I haven't had a judge tell me that I did something good for like the last 15 years.
Well, there you go.
I want to take that home.
There you go. So, so when I look at what would go into, what factors I would use when I'm considering a plea agreement, they're not altogether different from what they were 15, 20, 20, even 25 years ago. The first thing I want to do is make sure I'm totally looking at the offense and the offender. So that's what you're supposed to do, but sometimes we forget the offender part. We look at the offense and we say, ooh, that was bad. You know, you're done. Or not so bad, maybe there's some room. We need to take an equal look or maybe even a stronger look at the offender because we don't have room in the jail. And sending somebody to jail won't necessarily change their future pathway. Providing a fine, particularly in cases like driving while license suspended, that, that's always been just incongruent in my mind because you are ticketed for driving while license is suspended, you can't pay the fine, you got to go to work, you get in your car and drive, you are stopped, you are now driving while license is suspended again. And so you have all of these fines that rack up, then you have reinstatement fees, then you have secretary of state, and it becomes a vicious circle that most people cannot get out of. And so the idea of just piling that on, as well as court costs, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense because you never get past that. So I look at the offender, I look at the, the offense, I look at the victim's wishes, and that would include not only an actual victim, if it was a domestic violence or some other property crime, but also engage the law enforcement official. You have to have a good relationship with that law enforcement official, and of course you want to include them in letting them know what the outcome is and getting their opinion. I would want to understand the willingness of the participant to participate in something outside of just a regular, straight probation or jail sentence. Because if they're not willing to participate in, particularly if it's a treatment court, then there's no sense in even considering an alternative. I would look at the age of the offender, whether the offender has any special needs or disabilities, because that would inform on whether there are other community supports that I would be looking at to consider it. And I, I can tell you in terms of the jail reform legislation, the critical piece for me was the ability of, or now the elimination of the minimum mandatory, mandatory minimum sentencing. So once you're able to sentence outside of that box without having to justify the reason, that opens up the opportunities to any level of creativity that you as a prosecutor, as a defense attorney, as a judge, as a probation department, as a community advocate can come up to. And I think because of the volume, because of the lack of space in jail, because of the need to deter, you need to bring in as many people and understand what's available in your community. So those are the primary things, and I have notes all over the place because I think this is, it's an incredible opportunity to look at whether the sentence that you're fashioning actually has the opportunity to result in deterring future crime and then pay attention to it, so.
Thank you. Can I capture number 15?
Yeah.
Is that correct on the other page?
No, it's, I'll ask it anyway because I can. Experience as a criminal defense attorney, benefit to and selected.
Oh, yeah.
As a, as an advocate.
Yeah, no, Charlie talked a little bit about that, but I can tell you, because I was such a prosecutor, and there's a mindset that goes along with being a prosecutor, and you have to really work against not becoming narrow or keeping blinders on, and some are better than others. And so when I started getting involved in some of the specialty courts and really taking a deep dive into really understanding who this person is and why they would benefit from the treatment court, it's really been just a really good shift in understanding all of the pieces that go into what I mean when I say, take a look at the offender.
I'll ask this last question here. How can you ensure that the primary and assistant prosecutors will adhere to the charter of plea bargain policies established by this council? And that would be complicated if you don't quite have a set team yet, of what's going to be the philosophy, how are you going to keep that team or are you using multiple?
They'll do, they'll follow.
Take care. They'll take care.
I don't, so, so one of the things is, is a lot of check-ins, a lot of review, and I'm not talking about micromanaging, but if you have someone that isn't used to that system, I have an obligation to make sure they thoroughly understand it and hold their hand and walk them through that process and help them with that because it's something that I want them to be successful with, and you will demand that they be successful with that, and, and I think it's an awesome job.
Any specific closing arguments?
Well, I just wanted personally to say I appreciate you accommodating my schedule and the issues that I'm dealing with on the home front, so I, I really appreciate that and thank you to all of you.
We're all dealing stuff right now. You've got to be considerate of everyone's stuff.
Wouldn't that be a wonderful thing if we were all a little more considerate?
And I, and I want to, I want to say thank you as well. I hope we're selected. I think we have some valuable skills that we could offer to the city of East Lansing and to the city council. If, if we do, I would look forward to really establishing a relationship of trust so that you understand that we are credible people and you can rely on us, and that we can assist you in meeting the goals that you've set out, and you have a lot, a lot on your plate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. I didn't hear.
I have questions about the hourly rate. So who's a member? This is the 250 and 350, so your range would be 250 to 350 on the civil side.
Correct.
And I noticed that monthly fee cap of $35,000 for whatever is less.
That's for the civil, yeah.
For the civil cycle.
Yeah.
And so it doesn't, there's no, nothing similar about the prosecution, it's just that being.
Well, we could probably talk about it if we had more information, you know, to give you a cap. I mean, you know, we, we'd like to be in a relationship where it's beneficial for both of us. We don't want to take advantage of you, and we, and we don't want you taking advantage of us, but we didn't really have enough information to try to provide you a cap on the other side.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks a lot. We'll see you later.
Are you originally from Calhoun County?
Uh, no, I'm originally from Detroit.
Oh, okay.
And then ended up over here.
Oh, okay.
Driven national, the east is from...
Yeah.
So, head down the stairs, part of the world.
I'm on the east side of the state on a regular basis.
Approval of the agenda.
Communication with the audience.
We got to, we got to close out the side.
I'm sorry. I'll see you.
Motion to approve the agenda for this meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda. You want a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communication with the audience.
Is there any communication from the audience?
Council of Communications.
Any council person communications?
Yeah.
Right, any adjournments?